This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. Welcome to the Monmouth City Council Meeting for the evening of Tuesday, March 2nd. I would like to call this meeting to order, and we will start with the roll call. Please, Phyllis.
Counselor Belts?
Here.
Counselor Carey?
Here.
Counselor Lopez?
Here.
Counselor McKeel?
Here.
Counselor Oberst?
Yes.
Counselor Salinas Oliveras?
Here.
Mayor Coons?
I am here. And for the flag salute this evening, Counselor Carey, could you please lead us in that? We'll have everyone else mute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, sir. We start off our meeting with the consent calendar tonight that does consist of the minutes of our meeting of February 16th, both a regular meeting and minutes for a work session. So at this time, I would invite any corrections or additions to the minutes. If not, entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar is submitted.
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Thank you, Counselor McKeel. And a second from, sorry, Counselor Oberst?
I had a couple of things that I had emailed Phyllis about that came out in the minutes not quite exactly as I had thought I had spoken. And I don't know if she had a chance to check the tape to see if I was right or she was. And they are not of great consequence. So if they are sustained as that to us earlier, that's fine.
Phyllis, were there some corrections after looking at that?
I did not have an opportunity to look at it.
So Counselor Oberst, are you all right with them as presented then? You're muted, so.
Yeah, I got it. It's not, as I say, it's not anything of great consequence. It's more clarity about what I said. I think the one that I might like to look at, and we'll see if I can find it quickly, I had written these down, and of course, I have subsequently put that piece of paper aside. It was in our discussion around the housing stuff. And I did say cottage clusters might be a hard sell, and I intended that to mean in existing development. And that if there's any way we can make a distinction between new and existing, and allow such a thing in new, but not have it be retroactive into old existing development, I think that that would probably be a good thing.
Okay, so what we'll do then, that's, you know, if you don't mind, if we can approve them as is, I think you clarified now what you meant, whether or not you said that and it was recorded properly. I think that's a great point going forward. Maybe we can accept that and just vote on the motion. Is that all right?
That's fine. That's good.
All right. Your clarification for yourself, so noted. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And any opposed? Great. Thank you very much. For the mayor's report this evening, I just have a couple of things. One, the city has received a thank you letter from the Friends of the Ella Karan Food Bank. They have really, of course, as we all know, had a huge job to do in the last year. And during this time, the food bank has actually expanded services. They now are open four times per week. They are creating a distribution of 200 to 250 boxes of farmer-to-family food at each distribution, serving over 9,000 people with that. They bring weekly, they bring fresh produce to the Ash Creek Elementary Meal Site. So the school district hands out meals, and the food bank hands out fresh produce. They provided food for the fire evacuees. And also, they provided 315 families all the supplies for a Thanksgiving dinner. So the food bank thanks us for our support and our donations as a city. But I would like to take this opportunity for the incredible work that volunteers, all of them, all volunteers at the Ella Karan Food Bank have done in the last 12 months to support folks in our community. Also, speaking of, speaking of support, today is Woo Day of Giving. And this is a day annually in which the Western Oregon Unity University Foundation invites folks to give either one-time donations or sign up, as I do, for my regular donation, recurring gift. And if you just Google woo.edu Foundation Giving Day, you can find a way to do that. There are opportunities to give generally or to direct your gift. For example, student success scholarships, the Fund for Wolf Athletics, I'm pretty sure we have someone on here who would encourage that. They have an LGBTQ1A Commitment Scholarship, the Veterans Resource Center, the softball program is doing a special drive, the Smith Fine Arts Series, music education scholarships. So plenty of opportunities to support the students at Western Oregon University, again, many of whom are first-generation students who need our help and support in completing their college education. So as I did today, I ask you all, if you can, to give to Western Oregon today. There is a new program out. The state has just announced an application period for folks who are on unemployment and for whom that creates a hardship in making a mortgage payment. So there have been a lot of rent assistance programs, but there is currently an actual mortgage assistant. They will directly pay the lender and make those mortgage payments to help get caught up. This is a statewide program with a statewide application process. It's not, it's going to be very competitive, I'm afraid. But if you know someone who's expressed that kind of hardship, it, well, I don't have the website. We'll put that out. I think we put it on our Facebook page. The Chamber's been sharing it as well. But the applications open on that next week, which are, or in next week. So I would sure hope that we can get help again to people in our community in need. So that's what I have this evening. We don't have any board and commission appointments, and that is my fault. I did not get a chance to interview those planning commissioners. So I will put that on our agenda again. And we did have one other application, but I didn't forward that to all of you. So I will also move that forward to another meeting and ask any updates on board and commission activities since our last meeting. Yes, Counselor Lopez?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I do have an update on the MyNet Board. The MyNet Board, the MyNet Board has met since our last meeting. And amongst, amongst a few other things, we have approved a, approved a merit raise increase for the CEO of MyNet. We also considered but did not approve bonuses or other compensation raises for the employees of MyNet. I should give you a little bit of background history here, that the merit raise for the CEO was, was late in coming. It's been a couple of years since we have done that. And so this was a little bit of catch-up there. And aside from that, MyNet, much like the city, is very much looking forward to digging into this next budgeting, budgeting calendar and budgeting session with a lot of work going into, into that for the future.
Great. Thank you very much. Other reports? Counselor Oberst?
The Traffic Safety Commission met last night, had a series of old business items. At one point, the city was looking at requesting a speed study from ODOT on South Highway 99 out towards Gwin Street, as Gwin Street's become increasingly busy. And then ODOT decided it was time to rebuild Highway 99 instead. So we didn't get the speed study, and we're looking at applying for it, for it again. But we also have plans for a bike pit corridor study, parking. And so Russ wonders, do we want to do these things at the same time? Do we want to do them separately? He's going to check in with ODOT on that. There's also a notion of a speed study on Hoffman with the new subdivision going in there. Again, the question is, do you do that now, or do you wait for houses and people to be pulling out of that street and do it then? It's a county road, so we'd have to ask the county to ask for that speed study. There was a request made to study residential parking-only zone on Jackson between Stadium and Mar Court, so that one block section of Jackson where the apartment houses have gone in, with Western mostly remote. The decision was to hold off on that because there are so, you know, so many fewer cars in the area. It appears to be mostly residence parking there, and that would be, if you had a residential-only parking zone, wouldn't do anything to, if you, if there's so many people parked there. One of the commissioners does live on Mar Court, and he noted that it didn't seem to be a problem to him. But then again, students have been down in number. Counselor Belts can correct me when I get this wrong. But Chariots used to have a flex service in town where you can call for a pickup, and they have replaced that with Route 45. That now has four stops that are, instead of just being on Main Street and then off to Dallas or off to Independence, there are four stops that are off the main drag, Atwater and Jackson at the County Health, Community Health Clinic, Eccles at Ackerman, south of the post office, Ackerman at Monmouth Ave, and College at Clay. And if you do need a pickup, you can still ask for one. Did I get that right, Roxanne? Good. And Oregon 194, so basically, Main Street on out to Whitman and Fall City Highway, you know, that corner where you make the left turn if you're outbound at Main onto Whitman, people miss the fact that they're supposed to turn there. And so they go down West Main and turn around in people's driveways. And we've had a request to see if we can improve perception there. And it turned out that a walnut tree had grown up in front of the sign that showed that the road turns there. So that has been pruned. You know, we had ODOT agreed to put in a curved dotted line, center line there a while back. It's still kind of hairy, because if you're coming west or east on Main Street, you come to that corner, and it says, "Oncoming traffic does not stop." It doesn't mention the fact that traffic to your right does not stop either. And, but you know, look, the bottom line is, it's ODOT's road. They will decide how they want it to be. And the ideal solution, if it were our street, would probably be a four-way stop. But ODOT is in the business of moving traffic, not stopping it. And so until we have a large number of accidents, I don't think anything's going to happen there. Safe routes to school, planning grant to study MES crossings, Church at 99 and halfway at Main. Once we have studied those crossings, we'll have the information we need, and that will include some citizen outreach. We'll have the information we need to apply for a construction grant to see if we can approve those crossings. Two pieces of new business. There is a citizen concerned about inbound speeds on Fall City Highway Whitman, and ODOT's added a couple of speed signs for us. And then Chief talked about the permanent radar reader board signs that we have added, if you come into town on Riddle, Helmut, or Mistletoe. They've been very successful. Drivers are definitely slowing down sooner and to a more reasonable speed at those locations. If we wanted one on the Fall City Highway Whitman approach to town, that's ODOT's highway, and we'd have to ask them, and they would probably have to put it in. The idea was mentioned of Talmage coming in on to 16th Street, and that's a county road, so they would probably be in charge of that one. And we do have, our mobile radar reader board is on its last legs. Chief says it's been baling wire and twine for a while, a new one coming this summer. And then we did have a little discussion about the amount of failing pavement on Highway 51, and it starts in downtown Independence and comes all the way through. And it's getting to the point where, you know, we've got potholes incipient, we have potholes in evidence, we have a good chance of the road bed really starting to crumble. And it's gone from a quick and easy patch to dig it out and completely reconstruct the patch of road. Don't have any idea if ODOT's going to do that. May have a chance to reach out and talk to them about that. And then finally, this was Chief, Chief Talon's last meeting, and I did note that the first citizen involvement I had with our city was on, is a citizen member of the Traffic Safety Commission, where I sat down with this handsome young police chief. And here I am, sitting down with the same handsome, not-quite-so-young police chief on his last meeting of the group. And I congratulated him on his retirement and, you know, thanked him for all his hard work on behalf of the city. This group meets quarterly, next meeting 6, 7, Monday the 7th of June. And that's it. Sorry, that was lengthy. It was a long meeting.
That, that's great. Yes, when they only meet every three months and often skip meetings, that's good. Counselor Carey?
You know, and I, you know, with the only meeting quarterly, it's hard to get to this stuff. But, you know, I think there's a speed study proposed initially for coming in in the south. I think we need the same thing coming in from the north. We've had a continual problem with trucks coming in hot, Jake braking, and I, you know, it's odd nauseam. You've heard about this from me. But there's been nothing that's, that's, we've been able to really solve. And so the speed would be the first thing to look at. Second thing, if we're going to do a crosswalk study down there, it would seem speed would be part of that. So incoming inbound speed. So, you know, I would hope that we could include that. And then question on the, that, you know, question on the portable speed sign, my recollection is that was approved in the budget a year ago. I'm wondering why we're only now getting, or I assume by June 30, but, you know, in this fiscal year. But you know, it seems that it could be used.
I believe that, you know, I could have this wrong. And if, if so, I hope Darryl will speak up. But the sign has been purchased. It's a matter of getting it here and set up and running. But we will have that sign in place and being used by this summer. Did I get that right, Chief?
Yes, yes, we did get it ordered. And Counselor Carey, you're correct that we did get approval for that purchase. And so we have it on order. We just haven't received it yet. Our hope is that it will obviously get here before the end of June, and then we can start deploying that out into the community.
Are we in jeopardy of, if that doesn't arrive by June 30, are we in jeopardy? We got plenty of time, I'm assuming, but would be, would be in jeopardy of pushing that to another budget year?
I'm hoping that it'll be here in time. We don't have an actual arrival date. But if it doesn't come, generally, what we've done in the past is, we will just come back to the Budget Committee again and advise that we weren't able to make the purchase because it, for whatever reason, we couldn't get the delivery in time. And generally, we'll get reapproval. And that money will just basically, the money from this current fiscal year will go back to general fund, and then it'll get reallocated again by the Budget Committee going into the following fiscal year so we can purchase.
And John, to address your concerns about North Highway 99, I concur. I have to walk Church Street all the time. When that new development goes in north of town, it, at this point, the access to that is going to be from Highway 99. And I suspect that a lower speed limit will be pushed out considerably north of town when there's a new street coming in there. The current speed study request from the Commission was to drop speeds to 35 outbound on 99 until you get out to Gwin Street. And I would expect to see a similar request, you know, when that new development goes in. It's going to be a year or two before that's in. But as I recall, they have put in a preliminary plat at this point. So they're not wasting time with that, that piece of land.
Thank you. And appreciate that. Good questions. Any other reports from boards or commissions for this evening? Not seeing any. We will turn to Marty for the City Manager's Report.
Thanks, Madam Mayor, and good evening, Council. I have a couple of echoes of prior reports, and I will make them as quick as I possibly can. A lot of what I have tonight to report on is about COVID-19 and response to COVID-19. So coming up on March 8, Business Oregon is going to open the first round of commercial rent relief grants. And those are designed to help small businesses who are behind on their lease payments. There's been $100 million allocated through Business Oregon, and the idea is to give financial assistance to small businesses and commercial landlords who have been impacted by COVID-19. For now, all I'll say is that, that, that round, first round of funding will open March 8, and it'll be open for two weeks. And then there's a second allocation that will be coming up in April. But the idea is, we're trying to get the word out to businesses, both tenants and landlords, as the landlord is the one, the property owner is the one who needs to apply. So that's a program that's coming soon here to help with commercial rent relief. The mayor mentioned the mortgage relief program in her report, so I won't say anything more about that, except that we do have links to those programs. It'll be up on our website, and we're trying to push that information out to our audiences who might be able to use those grant programs. As Polk County moved into the high-risk level on February 26, Monmouth is also reopening our city services gradually in the high-risk level. What to expect for our city operations beginning on March 1, so yesterday. Generally, our front doors and our counters are going to be open during business hours. And we'll still be meeting our physical distancing and our face covering requirements, and still holding virtual meetings for the executive orders as they still stand. But our lobbies in the Police Department, in Power and Light, at Public Works will be open. City Hall will be open 10 to 1 on weekdays. And during the DNP process, which is next week, we have extended hours on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. Monmouth Public Library is going to continue their curbside pickup service and begin in library limited services. Those will be limited by building capacity requirements and time limits. But we're working out which days and hours that that is going to begin to happen, and it'll be, it'll coincide with our curbside service. And we're going to keep the senior center closed until we move into the moderate risk level, moderate risk category. And our senior center director is available by appointment to assist folks with doing things like scheduling vaccine appointments or signing up for, for MyChart accounts to help with getting vaccinated. And the only other service I will mention about reopening with COVID-19 and in the, in this risk level is municipal court is, will continue to be held virtually. We have both an in-person and a virtual option for that. And so that's going on as, as it has been. Two other quick notes. One has already been mentioned. We have a transition coming up in the position of police chief in the Police Department. And Chief Talon, you announced your retirement. That is coming up effective April 30, but you let us know back in October. And back in December, I mentioned that Chief Talon will be using some of his time off through April 30. So his last day is next week, March 11. I've asked Lieutenant Isaiah Haynes to serve in the interim police chief beginning at that time. And I appreciate that he's willing to take on that leadership assignment. And again, I just want to acknowledge and honor Chief Talon's care and concern and commitment to Monmouth. And I hope that between now and April 30, we'll have another way to find an appropriate appreciation for Chief Talon's service. So we have change on the way. And then finally, we have a council priorities work session scheduled for next week on March 9. So that's a virtual meeting work session. And thank you all for letting me know of your availability, so we can finalize the council priorities for the upcoming 2021, 22 fiscal year. And I think our goal at that meeting is for you to discuss the priorities as you got started doing at the end of January. Hear your expectations and staffs for the work that can be accomplished. And also, it'll set us up to propose the 21, 22 budget. That's what I have for a report. I welcome any questions you have. Thank you.
Anything for Ms. Wine? Seeing nothing. This is the time of the meeting we have set aside for council or for citizen comments. We, tonight in the room, we have with us, and I guess you can't see him back there, very well, we have, joining with us, a reporter from the Admirizer Observer. So not a public comment, but we do have a guest in the room, and I'd like to welcome him this evening. Phyllis Bowman, comments submitted in advance, or has anyone let you know they are here to make public comment?
Comments submitted in advance. This one is from Paul Seber. What are your intentions regarding the lack of emergency vehicle access at Monmouth Elementary School in violation of state safety and building codes? In a recent city council meeting, a member expressed concern over the safety of a dozen city employees working in the current city hall during an emergency. The big one hostages fire, but no emergency access to MES has been expressed. What are, where are your priorities? Thank you, Paul Seber.
Thank you, Phyllis, for that. And certainly, obviously, that is an issue. The school district has looked at over the years as well. We know that, that, that school has sort of outgrown a neighborhood location, but not, no action at this time. So, yes, Counselor.
It seems to me that we could clarify that the city has no dog in this fight until such time the school district has a, has a request or some sort of an easement of, or whatever it might be. So perhaps we can ponder and, and direct your attention to the school. Because, I mean, it's not.
Right. Thank you. Yes. Yeah, it is not, not a city situation. And again, the school district has a long-range facility plan that, and where options were studied. And that actually is coming up for review. But basically, the only options at that site were to create an exit to the north. And to the north of that property are houses. So the only way to create an exit to the north would actually be to offer people an opportunity to sell their homes and turn them into a driveway. So that's, that's in the long-range facility plan of the school district to look at, for sure.
Madam Mayor, I'm happy to contact Mr. Seber with a response.
Thank you. Yep. Marty, you will get ahold of him and, and let him know that we, we share concerns about safety and security issues. But the, the streets are our concern, and that's where the city gets to stop at telling people what to do. All right. And so, Phyllis, no other comments have come forth?
No, there have not been.
Thank you. This evening, we will continue with our business agenda. We have a couple of presentations, and then council comments, and then we will adjourn to a work session. We have some guests for that as well, and we will finish the evening with our executive session, and that will be pursuant to ORS 192662, a performance evaluation of a public officer, an employee. And I will read the full script as we get closer to that, but we will move into our presentation of our audit. And so this evening, we have with us Sheila Landis from our audit firm, I believe, and I will turn it over to Janet Schnard, or Marty, somebody?
Janet.
Janet and Sheila. To introduce Sheila and let us know where we are on the audit for 2019-20.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor and honorable council members. I'm delighted to have Sheila Landis with us this evening from our audit firm, Kuntz, Blaskas and Associates. And she will be telling you just a little bit about how the audit went this year. It was an anomalous year, to say the least, but we did manage to file, as you know, our annual audit, audited reports with a clean audit again, and that went in on February 15th per our extension. We did have one significant deficiency that we'll talk about a little later as far as resolution and action plan letter that we need to submit to the Secretary of State, but at this point, I'd like to have Sheila tell you a little bit about how the audit went.
And thank you all for having me. It's, it's a little interesting to be here in March. Usually, I'm, I'm presenting at your meeting a little earlier, with that being said, due to the extension. However, I'm, I'm happy to be here. Marty, I have not met you in person yet, so nice to meet you. We'll be in touch more this year, I'm sure, so. Um, I am going to make this short and brief. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail regarding the financial statements themselves. If there are specific questions regarding statements, line items, or numbers, please reach out to me. Janet has my contact information, and I'm happy to go over that more in depth, but I do not plan on going through that report as it's quite lengthy. So generally speaking, the, the concern is, is over, you know, what was found during the audit, what recommendations do we have, and what were the deficiencies? And so that's where I'm going to focus on mostly, but again, very, very clean audit. We had one significant deficiency, and that was due to an inventory adjustment. There was a new inventory module. Janet has a lot more of the detailed information, and I, I'm sure you guys have, have already been made aware of the struggles that that has caused. And basically, there's been some adjustments that have accumulated over the last two years or so, once the new inventory module was put in place. And this year, the differences rise to a level of deficiency as well as needing to be adjusted to the financial statements, because we had to restate the beginning balance from last year and automatically warranted that deficiency. So it, it does not raise any red flags for us. It's just, it's one of those things that happened, and it was a very odd way that it happened. So again, if you have very specific questions, Janet can probably answer those a little more in, in, in detail. But that was, that is the significant deficiency that we're reporting this year. So I want to comment that anything that we reported in the last year has been improved on, nothing's been repeated. And anything else this year that we found was extremely minor in detail, so not even worth mentioning. You know, we, we do focus on internal controls and the processes that you have in place, if not more, as much as the balances in your financial statements. And so I really want to reiterate that not only were your internal controls maintained through this very, very tough year, but they were given priority. And so Janet and her team did an excellent job of making sure that all your processes stayed in place and that your controls were maintained. So it's very, very important. And you know, we have, we've had a year that we can't compare to any other year. So, you know, it blew our trend analyses off the map, and, you know, dealing with the pandemic and wildfires and protests and you name it, and working from home, all of those posed a lot of challenges, and a lot of people don't realize how those can impact all of the financial processes that you have behind the scenes. So the team did great, and we're really happy to see that. Also, you, the audit was, was, was smooth. Everyone was prepared, and we really appreciate the fact that you guys let us come in, sit in your chambers, and actually perform the audit in person. So we maintain social distance, but it really did make a difference that we were able to be there and, and see the documents and things that we needed to see. So Janet did mention the extension, and so that was, that was last on my list. Other than that, I don't have a lot. If there are questions, I'm happy to answer them here briefly, or, like I said, Janet has my contact information, and I'm happy to, to speak with anybody later on in detail. So.
Okay. Did anyone have any questions or observations about the audit that you would like to bring up with our auditor here? So because there is a significant deficiency, we are required to report that the council has reviewed that, and that we have also reviewed our staff plan of action to correct that deficiency. So with your packet tonight is actually a draft of the letter outlining what that deficiency was, the recommendation the auditor made, the plan of action that is going to be undertaken by our city staff, the timeframe that that will be accomplished. This will then go into the Secretary of State Audit's Division and become part of the record. Then next year will be addressed as to whether or not that was taken care of, but it is a relatively new Oregon law that we actually need to resolve to send this letter. And so the draft of which is included as Resolution Number 1914, a resolution to comply with ORS 297.4662, "By adopting a corrective action plan to address a significant deficiency identified in the fiscal year 1920 City of Monmouth annual audit." And I got to say, significant deficiency sounds really bad, but this is not really bad. This is a, when we've had a big change like this, one or two things may happen. This was one, and absolutely hats off to our staff for the clean audit, for this being the only thing that we need to address. And at this time, there is a proposed motion, if folks are comfortable with that action plan. We would, I would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution. Yes, Counselor McKeel came up, Mike first.
Actually, I was going to propose a motion, but maybe John had, Counselor Carey has a question.
I'll wait for the motion, and then during discussion, talk about my question.
Okay. Well, I move to adopt Resolution Number 1914 to comply with ORS 297.4662, "By adopting a corrective action plan to address a significant deficiency identified in the fiscal year 1920 City of Monmouth annual audit."
I'll take the second from Counselor Salina Soliveros and Counselor Carey. Questions or comments?
You know, I read the, I read, and admittedly, I sort of read it hurriedly, but the plan of action, and I, and I didn't fully understand that. So perhaps Janet could, could give us, in lay terms, what that means. I have an idea, but just in the, in the interest of due diligence, I'd like to hear her explanation, please.
Yes. So thank you for the opportunity. I did try to, to make it as straightforward as I could in, in the action plan letter, but sometimes these concepts and terms are, are challenging. Basically, we implemented a new inventory module with Monmouth Power and Light, and over the course of the two-year conversion, in, in accumulating the assets on our books differently than we had in the past, which was more of a manual tracking mechanism, we had situations where we were, basically, we would have expensed something perhaps, but then counted in inventory because we salvaged it. And so the cleanup around the conversion helped tremendously as far as having a better, a more robust set of assets. But as a result, through the conversion process, for two reasons. One, we had a software issue, which we have since fixed, and by since, I mean, in the last two, three months, we have been able to fix, determine what the issue was and fix it. And then secondly, we've developed a much more robust physical count and materials tracking mechanism through Power and Light to be sure that we can actually align our system reports with what's on the shelf. And so the good news is, we have higher valuation, but that doesn't mean it doesn't excuse it from an internal control perspective. At least, we didn't lose inventory. But, but the good news is that, you know, that we do have, we have actually put both of these fixes in place already, so we're very confident that our, that this situation has already been resolved, and that we hope that for next year, it'll be, you know, without incident. Does that help?
Thank you. That, that's why we have, that's new, Janet. Thank you.
Now repeat it back, please, Counselor Carey. All right. No, not, yeah, it's a little bit difficult concept there, but a couple of things leading to the issue. So any other comments or questions? If not, because this is a resolution, oh, it's just a resolution, so I believe we can do a voice vote?
Oh.
Nope. I believe we will do a roll call, please, on Resolution Number 1914.
Okay, well called. Counselor Belts?
Hi.
Counselor McKeel?
Hi.
Counselor Lopez?
Hi.
Counselor Oberst?
Yes.
Counselor Carey?
Hi.
Counselor Salina Soliveros?
Hi.
Okay, passes six to zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Janet, and thank you very much, Sheila, for joining us this evening to share that news with us. Appreciate your work in a completely upside-down world, and hope, hope, now that you're all used to it, of course, I'm sure this year will go much better, so thank you. Our next order of business is OLCC renewals, and this is a function that we undertake. We've talked before about maybe some new licenses, but these are the renewals of existing businesses. So I think we have, yes, Sergeant Strack is on the line with us, and that staff report is in your packet if we'd like to hear your, a little bit about the process and what we need to do this evening, Sergeant Strack. Looks like you're unmuted, but we can't hear you. Are you calling in as well? No?
Madam Mayor and members of the council, I will go have Sergeant Strack use my computer and see if he can fix this.
Thank you, Lieutenant.
Can we get a tour of the police station? It looks like.
Yeah, and now with the camera on, we can see what's going on. He hit the dead zone.
Okay, can you guys hear me now? All right. All right, Madam Mayor and city councilors, I appreciate your time. Thank you very much. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Sergeant Mike Strack over at the Police Department, and what I've got for you today is a 2021 liquor license renewal report. So the city has the option to make an annual recommendation to OLCC concerning the renewal of the liquor licenses for each business in Monmouth. The businesses are listed in the report. If no recommendation is received from the city, OLCC will proceed to make a determination of the renewal without any input. Previous council action has recommended approval of the liquor licenses for each of the listed businesses in this report. All businesses in the City of Monmouth wishing to sell alcohol must apply with OLCC, then they must apply, supply that application to the city and pay appropriate fees. Once that's received, the Police Department conducts a limited background on the applicant and anyone that is affiliated with or connected with the business in some sort of way. The Police Department completes the background and provides a report to the city manager for presentation to the city council. And city council has the option of making a recommendation to either approve, deny, or take no action at all. OLCC makes the final decision to grant or deny the applications after conducting their own investigation after receiving the council's recommendation. So I have reviewed the police reports related to the businesses in the report for the year of 2020, and upon conducting the review, all of the listed businesses had no police responses in regards to the sale of alcohol or any other violations of OLCC rules and/or regulations. The following information I put together on police-related incidents for a couple of the establishments that actually had police activity were the Shell Station and Jack's Pub. The Monmouth Police Department responded to eight incidents at the Shell Station. Again, there were no reported violations in regards to the sale of alcohol or violations of OLCC rules or regulations, but we did respond to calls such as assault, harassment, trespass, theft, disorderly, disorderly conduct, and emotionally disturbed persons. Respectively, we also responded to eight incidents at Jack's Pub. No reported violations in regards to the sale of alcohol or violations of OLCC rules, but the calls did range anywhere from trespass, domestic disturbance, menacing, intoxicated and suspicious persons, and welfare checks. The only thing to note from Jack's Pub is the Monmouth Police Department did arrest two DUIs that we were able to show that they were coming from Jack's Pub prior to being contacted by police. So again, just to kind of remind you, the council has an option to recommend approval of the liquor license renewals. You can recommend certain establishments be approved and not others, or you can recommend against all renewals in this report. Are there any discussions or questions from the council?
Counselor Oberst, and then Counselor McKeel? No.
Carol.
Carol first, Counselor McKeel first.
Thank you. So, Officer Sergeant, I'm sorry, and I, and I'm, I can't, I've forgotten your last name already, and I'm sorry, so.
Strack.
That's right, sorry, Sergeant Strack. I'm, I'm looking at Jack's Pub. Is, is this kind of a report that we get every year from Jack's Pub? Because it, and I, and I don't know the OC, OLCC rules, and and I didn't have time to look those up before the meeting this evening. And they're not violating, but it appears from the list of disturbances at Jack's Pub that there's, they're possibly not monitoring the level of alcohol intake. And is this kind of every year? Do we have this kind of report from Jack's Pub?
Yes, thank you for the question. So these types of calls that are listed in the report here are fairly typical in general for establishments such as a bar. You know, they're going to be pretty similar year to year. As far as the OLCC rules and regulation violations, you're looking at the selling to intoxicated persons, over serving, selling to minors or allowing minors in their establishment and things like that. And for for the things that you see in the report, these are, these are pretty typical calls for service. And most of these, the businesses are calling them in to have us come down and intervene before they become major issue. So it's not something that the the bars are allowing to happen. It's just stuff that typically happens at these locations.
Yes, Counselor Oberst and Counselor Lopez.
Sergeant Strack is with two DUIs and I see intoxicated persons. Is that extraordinarily high number, extraordinarily low number, about typical for what you'd expect to see? Being especially being COVID year and fewer people out the bar in the first place, I imagine. Or, you know, how does that, how does that strike you compared to, you know, your past experience with other locations or with this location?
I mean, it's a low number. I mean, if you really look at it with COVID, the way it is, and then not being able to open as as long, most bars have having to close by 10:00 PM. And then we don't have a lot of people in our community that we would normally have. And with Main Street Pub closing, you know, our numbers are pretty, pretty low in that regards. And like I said, Jack's Pub has done a pretty good job of getting in contact with us if they notice anybody that might be leaving their establishment that shouldn't be driving a vehicle and stuff like that.
Counselor Lopez.
Thank you, Madam, Madam Mayor. And thank you, thank you very much for bringing this report to us, Sergeant. I'm, I'm sure that you're not surprised that my question or comment is going to be on the topic of Jack's Pub as well. And I, I do come from a, come from a place where I have, I have a professional history with, with, with serving alcohol. I've been in both management as well as direct service positions in the past. And and I also currently do have my, my OLCC card myself still these days. So, you know, I would like to highlight for everyone here, and I think you've done a good job of it already, that, you know, a lot of times there, the servers or the management will try to head off an issue by reaching out to, reaching out to the authorities, to law enforcement and preventing, thus preventing a bigger issue. So, you know, I, I do understand that there are a lot of these things that are just unfortunately, kind of, kind of how things go. I am concerned that I, and, you know, I did not unfortunately look at the history of this, but I've got a memory and I do not recall this particular location having this volume of incidents. And so, you know, whether that is, you know, due to something they're doing or a change in clientele because of COVID, I'm not sure. But this does look like an increase in this specific location to me, especially in the point of the, the two DUIs being, being a concern. Could you speak to, not just generally if things are par for the course, but this particular business and its, its track record over the past couple of years?
No, we lost your, your audio again. Oh, no. No, can't hear you, Sergeant. There we go.
Sure. So.
Ah.
Oh.
Nope, breaking up. We cannot understand.
Can you hear me now?
No, if you turn off the video, it might help a little bit. Now it really sounds like a little bit of lag on your internet. If we can try that.
Yeah, unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yes.
How about now? Is that better?
Yep.
Probably not.
Go ahead.
Okay, how about right now? No delay?
Yes. Perfect.
Okay, I'm going to try it and see where we go from here. Okay, so in respect to Jack's particular, if you look at last year, numbers, calls for service, it's no higher than it was here. It's actually lower than it was last year, probably due to the COVID restrictions and everything else. The two DUIs, again, there's probably more or less, you know, more calls that we go under because we have to be able to clearly identify they come from that location. Sometimes that's very difficult. So with, I mean, like I said, there's no innocent calls from last year. If anything, they are lower. They might have just maybe identified more than than what we did last year as far as wanting to be thorough. But, yeah, any other questions? Thank you for that.
All right, Counselor Belts.
I did just want to note to Counselor McKeel that Jack's changed hands either last year or the year before. It used to be a place called The Gym. So you'd say, I'm going to The Gym. And so in some ways, tracking, because it's a different owner and because I've gone there before and I've gone there recently, it does seem to be a different clientele. So sometimes it's a little difficult to compare apples to apples when it's different folks and a different owner. So hopefully in the future going forward and without COVID, it will stay the same or reduce. So that's just my two cents.
Counselor Oberst, and then I'll look for, and then Counselor Carey, and then I'll look for a motion.
Oh, darn, I was going to ask you if you'd look for a motion now, because if you would, I'd like to move approval of all the license applications.
I will second. I will second that.
So moved and seconded to approve all listed establishments. Is that correct? Great. And I will ask all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And any opposed? All right, thank you very much. We shall forward that recommendation on to OLCC. And as we've said a million times before, they'll do it the darn well please with our recommendation because it carries not much weight with it. All right, at this point, we have one more bit of business, and that is a second reading and adoption of our ordinance that we put forward to adopt our comprehensive plan map amendment zone change. So a brief reminder from Suzanne Dufner, our Community Development Director.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. Yes, we do have the second reading this evening for ordinance thirteen ninety seven. This is an ordinance that would change the comprehensive plan map designation from medium density residential to commercial and change the zoning from medium density residential to commercial retail for a 1.2 acre parcel that's on the S curves at Ash Creek Station. There have been two public hearings for this particular action, one before the Planning Commission, one before the council. And at the close of the council, one did approve the action. So now this is the ordinance that will make it become officially effective. And there is a sample proposed motion for you on the cover staff memo. And with that, I'd be happy to answer the questions you might have about it.
All right, taking that little parcel right before the Edwards Road cutoff that used to have a house on it and make it part of the Ash Creek Station. Counselor Carey.
Madam Mayor, to frame the discussion, I'm going to move that the council adopt ordinance thirteen ninety seven and ordinance amending the comprehensive plan, plan map designation for the property located at 137 Monmouth Independence Highway from medium density residential to commercial and amending the zoning map designation from medium density residential to commercial retail.
I'll second.
Thank you, Counselor Carey, for the motion, and Counselor Lopez for the second is their discussion. All right, seeing none, I will ask Phyllis for the roll call on our ordinance, new ordinance number thirteen ninety seven.
Counselor Salinas Oliveros.
Yes.
Counselor Lopez.
Yes.
Counselor Oberst.
Yes.
Counselor McKeel.
Yes.
Counselor Belts.
Yes.
Counselor Carey.
Hi.
All right, passes six to zero. Thank you.
So much, Phyllis. All right. And at this time, I would ask if there are any council comments before we adjourn to our work session. Counselor Belts and then Counselor Lopez.
Just very quickly, I want to say that I attended the grand opening for the Thoughts and Gifts Project Office. It's a wonderful not-for-profit. They always say celebrating youth, celebrating you. They like to, they give birthday parties and birthday gifts for children and for seniors. And several city staff were there as well. I was representing the chamber as the vice president. And so it was a wonderful event. It was well attended, and I was just really pleased that, to see them moving into an actual permanent facility.
Thank you, Counselor Lopez.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Tonight, tonight, I'd like to take a moment to remind everyone that March is Women's History Month. In this month, let us all make time to commemorate and encourage the study, observance, and celebration of women's vital role in our national and world history. Now, a few ways of celebrating women may include listening to women musicians, reading works by women authors, watching shows or films produced and directed by women, or joining a local women's group such as our very own WIM, Women of Independence in Monmouth. Now, these are all wonderful ways of honoring women. And I have one more for you. I challenge you each to reach out to the women in your lives, perhaps a parent, spouse, grandparent, teacher, or mentor, and ask about their history, accomplishments, and triumphs. All around us are unsung woman heroes, inventors, and visionaries. I challenge you to go out and learn their stories. And with, with that challenge, I'd like to share a quote by the Nigerian storyteller and author Chimamanda Ngozi Adichie. Some people ask, why the word feminist? Why not just say you're a believer in human rights or something like that? Well, because that would be dishonest. Feminism is, of course, part of human rights in general. But to choose, but to choose to use the vague expression "human rights" is to deny the specific and particular problem of gender. It would be a way of pretending that it was not women who have for centuries been excluded. It would be a way of denying that the problem of gender targets women. And then in this spirit, I encourage you to all join me in celebrating women this month and join Ms. Adichie in to also declaring I am a feminist. We'll leave you with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Lopez.
Thank you, Counselor Lopez.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Lopez.
All right, if there are no further comments, again, we got to see his face briefly. I would like to thank Chief Darrell Talan for joining us this evening for his last official City Council meeting. And thank him again for his years of service, commitment, not just to the men and women of his department, to those of us who work for the city and appreciate his expertise and knowledge about his field, but really to everyone in the community. He has served, he has served youth organizations. He has served as a volunteer in so many ways. And we appreciate you, Darrell. We thank you. We're glad you will still be among us. And we will find a way to get to celebrate a little bit because we know that will embarrass you. And I don't think we could let you go without some sort of celebration. So when the time is possible, we will be able to get together and really thank you for this great accomplishment of your career and service to Monmouth.
Thank you so much, Mayor Kents. I appreciate that.
That's it, a man of many words. And so, thanks.
I do, I do look forward to being able to celebrate also. So hopefully, as the numbers go down and, and things start opening up a little more, hopefully within the next month or two, we'll be able to get together. And, and then we can all say a lot more than what we can do just on a Zoom meeting.
Great, I look forward to it very much. So congratulations to you and your lovely wife, Irene, for the well-deserved retirement. So.
Thank you.
All right, at this point, then, I would like to adjourn our regular meeting. We will go into our work session at this time. And we do have, again, some guests and a presentation and a chance to learn a little bit more, speaking of our excellent police force here. I would go ahead and call to order our work session. And Marty, do you want to introduce a little bit about this? Or we turn it over to?
Lieutenant Hines is going to introduce this topic.
I would like to then welcome Lieutenant Isaiah Hines and have him talk about our topic tonight for our work session.
Hi, good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. I apologize for the computer issues. I had to call in, and so I have my screen off, but I can see all of you. So I'd like to welcome tonight Ken Sancharan and Angel Perrin from the Oregon Criminal Justice Commission. I have asked them to come and give us a presentation on the statewide program, the Statistical Transparency of Policing, or STOP program. We want to acknowledge and hopefully shed a little bit of light on some questions that were brought up regarding STOP data at council meeting last year. And hopefully, we can answer some of those questions and use some of our current data from Monmouth PD. The initial report for tier three agencies, which is what Monmouth is, it's not due until July of 2021, I believe. And so this is kind of a pre-report, if you will, and probably does not have all of the analysis that it's done. And Ken hopefully can talk to some of that. So without further ado, I will welcome Ken and Angel, and thank you for coming.
Thank you, Lieutenant. And everybody hear me? Wonderful. With all the technical issues tonight, this is my first time. tonight, this is my first time on GoToMeeting, so I wanted to make sure you could hear me. And I will also now try to share my screen, which is the next adventure whenever you're on a new platform show. So let me see if I can do that. Oh, it looks like I'll need to be made a presenter by the organizer to do that. There we go. Okay, can everybody see a presentation now entitled Statistical Transparency of Policing Program?
Yes.
Great. So yes, thank you again for having me here tonight. My name is Ken Sanchagran, and I'm the Executive Director of the Oregon Criminal Justice Commission. And before becoming the Executive Director in December of this year, I've also had the pleasure of being the Director of the STOP program at the agency for the past three years. And so, as the lieutenant introduced, I'll provide some background about the program, talk about what we do with the data that's collected, and I will provide a preview of what we have for the city of Monmouth tonight, as well as talking about some issues that we're thinking about around the commission when it comes to analyzing your data. So the Oregon STOP program, Statistical Transparency of Policing, was created out of a bill that was passed in 2017 by the Oregon Legislature, HB 2355. And 2355 was a rather large and sweeping bill in several ways. It created the STOP program. It also made some pretty sweeping changes to possession of controlled substances. And so there were a couple of different things going on in that bill. But for our purposes, the STOP program was created to collect law enforcement data on all discretionary traffic and pedestrian stops. And what that means by discretionary is, from a traffic stop perspective, that means any stop initiated by an officer for a violation of the Oregon Vehicle Code that was not associated with a previous call for service. On the pedestrian side, that means it is any stop of a pedestrian not associated with a call for service, but then also not associated with the routine entry or exit from buildings. And so that would, that would mean that, you know, if an officer asks to search your bag, or to look for alcohol on your person if you're entering into a football stadium, that would not count as a reportable stop under this program. However, if an officer stops and initiates a conversation with an individual on the street, then that would count as a pedestrian stop for our data collection. And when it comes to the types of information that is collected by agencies about the stop, you'll see that there are the basics of the stop itself. Where did it happen? What time did it happen? What day? And then the characteristics of the stop itself. Why was the stop initiated? What was the outcome? Was a search conducted? But then also some information about the stopped individual, their perceived race, their gender, their age. And so we use this data to look at different aspects of the stop that we'll talk about in just a few moments. Now, also, as mentioned, you all are classified in the city of Monmouth as a tier three organization. So the way that the STOP program was designed and rolled out was that the largest agencies in the state were asked to participate first. And so we had 12 tier one agencies that have 100 or more officers with STOP authority, and they began reporting a couple of years ago. We just recently initiated all of our tier two agencies into the data collection program, and that includes any agency with 25 to 99 officers. And they were included in our most recent report, which was released in December of 2020. We now have our tier three agencies, which is the rest of the state, reporting into our system, and we will report on all tier threes, including the city of Monmouth, in December of this year. So you don't have to wait quite as long as the lieutenant was thinking when he just mentioned that a few minutes ago. But in December of this year, we will be analyzing your data. So here's a little timeline of where we are. As I mentioned, HB 2355 was passed in 2017. Now we're to our tier three part of the timeline. We began collecting data officially in July of 2020. We have a little bit of data that is earlier than that for the city of Monmouth as we began to bring you all into our system that I include in the discussion today. The initial year of data collection cuts off in July of this year, and then we have a few months to analyze the data before reporting right after Thanksgiving. So now I'm going to go into a little discussion of the challenges that we face when looking at traffic stop data, as well as the ways that we at the Criminal Justice Commission are trying to overcome some of those challenges, so that when we report on disparities in stops, we feel very confident in what we've found. So traffic stop research in general has been something that has been looked at for around 30 years. It's maybe about 35 years now. And for the most of that time period, when we talk about analyses of traffic stop data, those analyses have utilized what are known as benchmarks. And I have an example of benchmarks right here on the sample data that I'm reporting. This is just data from Connecticut, so that way no one in Oregon can get upset when they see their city up here as an example in my intro. And so what a benchmark does is it looks at the share of stops for a given racial or ethnic group, and then it compares those shares of stops with their census population. So you can see here on the example for the borough of Berlin in Connecticut, 22.29% of their stops were of African-American drivers. And that is then compared to the share of African-Americans who live in the borough of Berlin, which is around 13%. And then you come up with a rate, excuse me, my children, I guess, have not gone to bed yet. And then you are able to come up with a ratio. And if that ratio is above one, then that is going to indicate that there is a disparity between the census population and the stopped population. While that is a very intuitive measure, and it's very easy to come up with, it is one that academic research demonstrates can often lead to biased results. And so what we've really learned over the years is that doing high-quality research on traffic stop data, it's very difficult. We also are not able to ever completely prove or disprove discrimination by just looking at statistical data. And so what we're able to really provide to agencies or to city councils, interested citizens, is we're looking to determine whether we detect any systematic indicators of bias at the agency level. And so what that really means is that if we say that an agency does not have discriminatory practices, that means that across the agency, we feel pretty confident that there are not those types of practices going on. But that does not necessarily, or does not at all, discount individual experiences that folks may have with officers that are real and experienced amongst themselves. So it's important for me, I always like to try to kind of set the guardrails as to what we can and can't do with hundreds and hundreds of thousands of traffic stops that we analyze every year, because we cannot completely unpack all of the contextual information beyond the data points that we have. So when I talk about benchmarks being problematic, what does that really mean? The example, I'll continue to pick on the borough of Berlin here. What that means is that when we look at Berlin, which has, by all accounts, a pretty significant disparity between its census population and the stopped population, what we're trying to do is unpack this difference that we see between our two metrics, and trying to determine what share of that difference is attributable to different causes. We always know within statistical research that there's going to be a degree of the difference that we just can't explain. It could be up to all kinds of things that happen outside of the models that we can conduct. However, we probably could surmise that if there's a difference, maybe some of that is due to racial profiling or biased policing. But it would be, it would not be very smart of us to assume that all of that difference is accountable for that, by that cause. Because research has also demonstrated that some alternative explanations have to be accounted for before we can really feel confident that there is a disparity present. And that could be differences in driving behavior. If there are differences across gender, age, or race, and how folks drive, then that could justify different stop rates based on those demographic factors. We also know that officer deployment patterns could be important. If you have officers deployed in an area of a town or a city that has a higher concentration of one type of driver, then even if they pulled over folks randomly in that area, they are going to have higher concentrations of folks of those groups. And so we can also think about that as differences in exposure to the police. That could be driven by differences in driving behavior, but not so much in how people drive, but maybe whether they drive. Research indicates that African-American and Latinx individuals are more likely to carpool or use public transportation than white individuals. And so if those folks live in an area but actually do not drive, then that would change their risk profile for being stopped at a given time. We also know, and of course, I've heard throughout the meeting today, a couple of references to 2020 being a very crazy year with COVID. But the research has indicated that due to the fact that more of our frontline workers are non-white, that could change the driving profile of an area. I have been lucky enough, and you get to see my bedroom tonight, to have worked from my bedroom for the past year. That means that I'm no longer commuting into Salem from my small town every day, and therefore, my risk of being stopped by the police is almost zero. However, if individuals who are not like me have to drive into work every day, now they actually may have a higher chance of being pulled over because there are fewer drivers on the road. So all of these things, we have to take into account the best we can, which makes our jobs as researchers very difficult. So what I have here for you now, I'm stopping at least initially the class in racial profiling. I have some initial data that we have collected for the city of Monmouth that covers October of 2019 through January of this year. So around, I think, January 26th is when we pulled this data. And so what we see are, you know, we're reporting the benchmarks, which is what I've just spent some time saying we don't necessarily want to do. But then also, at this point, it's really the best thing that we have to compare your data. And so what we can see is that we have our stop data overall in the time period that we have for you. We have around 6,000 stops, like most of our cities in the state of Oregon. The vast majority are for white individuals. And as we can see, we have some small differences if we measure them by ratios for our black, our Latinx, our Asian, Pacific Islander communities. We also have some for white. But I will mention that when we do benchmark analyses, which is not really our strong suit here at CJC, because we don't really think that they explain very much, what we usually look for to kind of become worried is we would look for a ratio of 1.5 or higher. And so at least in this case, compared to the census data that I was able to pull for the city of Monmouth, we actually think that your numbers are pretty close in line with the census population that we have. But that being said, we also want to make sure that for the city, we are taking into account some of the factors that we know influence stop rates, which are travel patterns for work, shopping, recreation, like I mentioned already, the COVID-related effects of driving patterns. But then too, similar to Eugene, to Corvallis, and some other cities that we have in the state, Monmouth being a small college town is also something that is going to drive some differences, or could possibly drive some differences, and may or may not be as significant this year compared to other years, given some of the different ways that colleges and universities have responded to the COVID-19 pandemic. And I see some folks just out of the corner of my eye furiously taking notes. Don't worry, I will send this PowerPoint on so that you all have a copy of it as well after we're finished. So what are some of those factors that are relevant to the city of Monmouth that we want to keep in mind? The first one, as I mentioned, are travel patterns, especially for work. There's a really cool tool called On the Map that you can use that uses census data to estimate inflow and outflow, travel patterns, for folks who are working in your city. And like most of our small towns, I live in Silverton, which is, you know, on the other side of Salem from you all. And so very similar to where I live, and like many of the small towns in Oregon, what the census data is able to tell us is, the way you read this little illustration here, is we see the outline of the city of Monmouth. The dark green arrow are the folks who live outside of the city who come into the city for work. The folks in the circle are the ones who live and work in Monmouth, and the ones with the light green arrow are the ones who leave Monmouth to go work elsewhere. And so we can see that every day, a pretty significant share of individuals who are working in the city, maybe outside of the COVID pandemic, are coming from other places. And it's a little hard to read, depending on the size of your screen, but you can also see where those folks come from. 17% of the folks who work in Monmouth come from the city of Salem. Around 10% come from Independence, around 5% from Dallas, and so on, and so on. And so what some researchers have done, we don't necessarily do at the CJC, is that they may estimate what could be the possible share of folks by race, ethnicity, or gender that come from each of those cities and contribute to the driving population during the day. Like I mentioned, we don't necessarily do that here at CJC. I think it's a little bit of overkill to do that type of analysis. But I do provide this, at least as an illustration, to kind of drive home the point that when we think about who's being stopped, we like to focus on the driving population as opposed to the population of folks who live in a given area. A couple other specific concerns that we have in mind, again, with Western Oregon University being present in your city, at least doing a brief search online and trying to learn a little bit more about WOU, it seems that around three-quarters of your students, like most universities anymore, live off-campus. And not all of them live in the city of Monmouth. And so certainly in a non-COVID year, there's going to be a lot of traffic flow that's being driven by those students coming in to study and work during the year. We also know that, like most universities, the Western Oregon attracts sports fans, other visitors, and folks throughout the year that are going to drive different stop rates that we will see. We've not really looked at Monmouth yet because we don't have a full year of data outside of 2020, but we could see this, whether it's for Portland Timbers games up in Portland, or Oregon Duck games down in Eugene, you can see this influx of folks who are coming in on the weekends. And interestingly, sometimes they drive up stop rates, sometimes they drive them down, because sometimes there's nobody speeding when you can't get through town, because, you know, all the streets are shut down. So it can have different effects on what we see. We also know that, given your city's proximity to Independence, we would expect that there would be a lot of trading back and forth between the two populations. I've had the pleasure of coming down for the Independence Independence Day parade before, and I've kind of seen how everything marches down the street from Monmouth into Independence. And so thinking of that really motivated me to think about, what is the racial breakdown of Independence in relationship to Monmouth? And certainly, there are some pretty significant differences which could drive those differences in stop rates. So now we're going to get back into some of the statistical modeling information that I have for you. So how do we solve those problems? How do we try to actually arrive at an estimate that makes us feel confident, given all of the concerns that I just outlined for you? Well, to do that, we utilize three different types of statistical analyses to conduct our work. One of them focuses on the decision to stop an individual, and then two of them focus on what happens after individuals are stopped. This first analysis has one of the better names for a statistical approach. You know, it makes data nerds like me feel a little bit more cool when we hang out with other data nerds. But it's called the Veil of Darkness model. And the whole idea behind the veil of darkness is that we're going to compare stops made in the daylight, when it's much easier for an officer to discern somebody's race or ethnicity, versus stops made at night, when it is more difficult. But it wouldn't really make sense to make comparisons between the share of drivers driving at noon, for example, compared to midnight, because those are going to be very different driving populations, perhaps. And so the way that we conduct this model is, we're hoping to see that stop rates of all individuals are equal across daylight and nighttime. But to make sure that we're looking at a similar driving population, we only compare drivers during the morning and evening commuting times. And we do that because during the morning and evening commuting times, sometimes it's light, and sometimes it's dark at the exact same time of day. So right now, we're all very happy it's spring, because it's staying darker a little bit later every single day. But we all know that in the depths of winter, when the sun goes down at basically 5:00 at night, we all drive home in the dark. However, as it gets into spring, summertime, we all drive home in the light. And so we're able to compare stops made throughout the year at the same time of day, so at 5:00 at night, for example, so that we're comparing a similar driving population throughout the year. However, sometimes those stops are being made in the dark, and sometimes they're being made in the light. And again, the idea is that if the stop rates are similar or the same, then that would be an indicator that stops are being made in a race-neutral manner. And what we have here is every agency that is on our webpage, on our dashboards, will have a scatter plot like this one. And so the way that you read this scatter plot is first, in the bottom, you have the time of year. This one goes from July of 18 through August of 19. I've not updated my PowerPoint in a little while. And so you can begin to see all of the little dots. Each dot is a stop of an individual. And dots are colored according to their race or ethnicity. And they're slightly darker. And they're slightly darker when the stop is made in the dark versus slightly lighter. So like a gray stop will be a stop of a white individual. If it's light gray, it's in the light. If it's dark gray, it's at night. And you can actually see a little curve of each, along each of those bands. And that's the changing sunlight or the, the rising sun or setting sun throughout the year. And so what we do is then we can look at the time of day. On the top, we have our evening commute. On the bottom, we have our morning commute. And as I mentioned, we focus in on these two areas primarily so that we can look at the changes in behavior over the year. We also, in that model, are able to address gender, the reason for the stop, the season, and then location. So we basically are only comparing stops made in your city or your town to other stops being made in your city or your town. The second type of analysis that we conduct is what is known as our predicted disposition analysis. So now that we've looked at who is stopped, we want to look at what happens once the stop was conducted. And so what we do for this is we are going to examine or we examine three different outcomes. Did you receive a citation? Did you receive a, were you searched or were you arrested? And the way that we do this is through the use of an approach called propensity score matching. But really what that means is that we are able to go through our data and we find statistical twins between different stops where everything about that stop is similar or the same, except that they are members of a different race or ethnicity. So we find people who are within the same age range. They were stopped for the same reason on the same day of the week, who are the same gender and at the same time. And the only difference between them is perhaps one is like myself, a nearly 40-year-old white man. And we find and compare that to a nearly 40-year-old Latin, Latino man who is again stopped for the same reason, same time of day, same day. And what we would expect is that if you are matched on all of these characteristics, except that one person is white and one person is Latino, then you would expect in general, across the average of all their outcomes, that they would be treated the same. If I'm stopped for speeding more than 10 miles over the speed limit and I match a Latino driver who is stopped for 10 miles over the speed limit, we should probably have the same chances of getting a traffic ticket for that offense. And so what we do is we then assess what does the share of tickets given to the white group look like compared to the Latino group or to the black group? The final type of analysis that we conduct is what is known as the hit rate or outcome test. And this one, while it looks a little fancy on my illustration here, it's actually also a pretty intuitive, pretty intuitive test. And what we look for in the hit rate test is we look at the rate of successful searches that are conducted across individuals of different race. Because what we would hypothesize is that if officers are applying their training and their experience in a race neutral manner to individuals when they're conducting searches, then in general, we would expect the success rates of contraband, finding contraband should be around the same as well. So as long as furtive movements, lack of eye contact are a good predictor of finding contraband on someone, it should be equal across both black individuals, Hispanic individuals, and white individuals. And so what we would ideally want to see is that we would want to see a success rate that is roughly equal. So our example here is that if searches of whites are successful around 60% of the time, the searches of Hispanics are only successful 10% of the time, then that would indicate that there is perhaps some discussions we need to have with that agency to try to determine why a different standard was being applied to, to Hispanic drivers. And so what we do on, in our report and on our dashboards is we plot these relative success rates on a little graph. And so what you would want as an agency is to be as close to the dotted line as possible and not in one of these triangles above or below the dotted line. Dotted line would indicate that you, your search success rates are equal across two racial groups. Being far away from that line would indicate that you have very disparate success rates. And so we, we provide that in, in all of our, in all of our reports and on our dashboards. And so you can see those relative rates. It's also a very good tool for law enforcement to be able to compare themselves against other law enforcement agencies. For example, in our first year's report, we saw that the Oregon State Police was almost perfectly equal across their searches of, of different groups and their success rate was around 60% overall. However, some of our other agencies were lower into the twenties, 20% success rate or, you know, or maybe just a little bit higher than that. And so it's also a good opportunity for agencies to perhaps be able to share some tactics that they could use to improve their success rates overall. Because of course, we would want very high success rates because that means you are not, you're not searching a lot of folks who were not necessarily needed to be researched, right? Because if you don't find contraband very often, then that would imply that most of your searches, maybe not were unnecessary, but maybe you are doing a little bit more searching than you need. So what are some challenges that we face when using these very fancy techniques for small agencies? It's often difficult for us to make conclusions when data categories are small. For example, we'll, we should look right here at your data. And we can see that at the moment, we only have three stops for Native Americans across the entire data set that we possess for you all. It's very difficult to make any kind of conclusion or to draw any type of conclusion from simply three stops. And so that is something that we, it's a challenge that we face both with our tier twos and across our tier threes. And sometimes, in addition to it being inadvisable to draw a conclusion from only three data points, sometimes our models can't even work if we don't have sufficient numbers of data points. And this is something that we certainly have learned a lot about in the past year. We, we were hoping to be able to include all of our tier twos in all of our fancy analyses that we conduct. But with COVID across the state, across our tier one and tier two agencies, we estimated that, that the stop volume fell by upwards of 40,000 stops across the state. And so for a number of our tier two agencies, this led to us being unable to conduct our analyses for them. And so what can small agencies and their communities expect? What we will do is all data that can be reported will be in both our report and our online dashboards. And when I say all data will be reported, every agency will get a basic summaries page on our dashboards. I have one for the city of Monmouth that I can share with you that we have created. But then as far as the, the more advanced analyses, we will do all those analyses for the groups that are large enough to conduct the analyses on. So for example, with the city of Monmouth, your volume for Latinx drivers, it's not anything that I find concerning, but I'll say it's big enough to where we can probably do analyses on them. Where those types of analyses can't be conducted, then the CJC, we've been going through some planning processes lately to determine what other types of data points we'd like to provide. And so we'll provide just both the descriptive breakdowns. It's like the basic breakdowns for, for this, those cities and towns. But then also we're working to provide some qualitative information on what those stops look like. You know, unfortunately, the, the one drawback of being a smaller town and with a tier three agency is perhaps for Native Americans, it would take many, many, many years for us to be able to do a, a, an analysis on those, on those folks. And simply because at the moment, those numbers of stops are so low. You know, but however, we want to make sure that we provide as much information as possible so that communities, even small communities, can have both effective and robust discussions with their law enforcement about what they're seeing on the ground. So at this point, I'd be more than happy to take questions. As I mentioned, I also have just a copy of, and I'm going to be really trying to see if I can figure out how to unshare my screen. And, and then perhaps for a moment, well, I'm, it's eight o'clock, you know, on a, on a, on a Tuesday night. So let me see if I can figure this out. Here we go. Okay, share screen monitor two. So hopefully, hopefully you don't see the go-to-meeting thing. Can everybody see a dashboard with city of Monmouth PD data on it? Oh, and of course I pressed a button. So I'll send a, a link to this as well. But this is a dashboard that is not publicly available yet because we have not released all of the data for all the tier threes. But this is what your dashboard will look like. And I'll provide a link to it when we release our report in December. And so as you can see, we have the basic breakdown by race on the top. It goes through, again, by race, breakdowns by age and gender. And I'll, I can scroll back up depending on what folks would like to look at. But we break it down by day of the week, month, and then some characteristics about the stop. So for example, we can see with, with your data, the vast majority of stops that are conducted in the city are for moving or speeding violations. We can also see that the majority of stops that we have been, that we have reported to us result in a warning as opposed to citation or arrest or some other type of action. And so it allows you to dig down and look by race to see what types of, you know, what types of further questions that you have. And like I mentioned, I'll be happy to send this out to folks. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you all have now.
Thank you so much. Yeah, this is fascinating stuff, I'm sure. And I had looked at it a year ago to learn more about it, but to see all these details is amazing. Counselor Carey, and you guys, I can't really see necessarily. You might have to wave your hand up a little bit in front of your eyes so I can call on you. John?
You know, the, one of the, the data points that you, you didn't really talk about was, was age. You know, how do you pull age out of that? And the reason I ask that is, is as you look at, at some of the, you know, the racial makeup of Monmouth, being the college town, you know, we have probably a higher percentage of, of college-age minorities that, you know, than, than other than the general population, let's say. And people of that age have, you know, that, they have different driving patterns than people my age, for example. So, so how do you factor that into the whole thing?
Sure. And, and just to aid in, in me being able to see folks faces who I'm talking to, I just jumped off the screen share there. Commissioner Carey, that's, that's a great question. The primary focus of our studies is to really look for racial disparities. And so that certainly, when, when, you know, my presentation and then the dashboard focus is mostly there. But what we try to do in our analyses is we are able to statistically control for age. And so that means, I think, the illustration for our matching analyses is probably the most relevant. When we're trying to match drivers together to see if folks are being treated in a disparate way, we're only looking at, again, a, a young white man who might be of college age versus a young Latino man of, of college age. And so while we're not necessarily searching at this point for direct comparisons between the outcomes based on age, we're still comparing similar individuals. We do the same for our veil of darkness analyses to where we statistically have controls for age so that again, we're at least comparing like to like. Though, though one area we could move into the future, I, I think that is certainly for certain cities and certainly for the college towns, is to do a much more direct age analysis. Because that is something that has been conducted. And oftentimes, for, for numerous reasons, we see that young men of color are stopped at rates that are greater than perhaps young men who aren't of color or, or, you know, young women who are white, for example. You know, there are different comparisons that we can do. However, our main focus, based on the intent of the, of the law, was to focus primarily on racial disparities at this point.
And I think that, that we all have, and certainly our, our council has, has an interest in that, as you described it. However, you know, in a former life, I used to hear kids complaining all the time about how the cops in either Monmouth or Independence were nailing them, going back and forth at one o'clock in the morning. And, you know, whether they had it coming or not. And it didn't matter whether they, you know, what, what they were. I mean, so age, and I'm glad to hear you say that you seem to use it as, as I understood, as a sort of a second, almost a second layer of consideration, but a consideration nonetheless. So yeah, now, and then finally for me, and good work and very interesting, by the way. When do you expect the, the data? And when do you close the loop on the data for Monmouth? And I guess I would, I would, hopefully, we're not going to be releasing too much publicly if we have an incomplete data set.
Oh, no, Monmouth will have a, a full year of data reporting. There's, when I mentioned that it's incomplete at this time, it's simply because we have some more time to go in the reporting period. We will have a full year of data from July 1st of 2020 through June 1st, or excuse me, June 30th of 2021. That will be the reporting period. You all have 100% reporting so far. We have no concerns with the data that we've seen. I've done some of these presentations before where we'll actually, some enterprising folks will catch little anomalies in the data and then it'll lead to a conversation between myself and, and the chief. And oftentimes, it just comes down to how things are being reported. It's nothing nefarious, but no, Monmouth will have a full year of data. The, your chief should be planning to hear from us as we get into November, at least with an indication of what we're beginning to see. And then the dashboards and the reports, they all go live on December 1st. It usually takes up most of my Thanksgiving break finalizing the report. But that's, that's the timing that the legislature set for us. And so that's when you should expect to, to see all of, all of this data put up. However, you know, I've, I'm always more than happy to continue to update the council. You know, as I've mentioned already, I don't see anything that jumps out at me as being especially concerning at this time. However, if there are specific questions that you all have, please don't hesitate to reach out to me. And, and then we can come back and have a, have an update as we get closer to the end of the reporting period.
Counselor Selena Soderbergh.
Thank you for sharing this information. And so there's, there's a few things that I've seen and maybe I'm not interpreting it correctly, but you did have a chart up with the age. And it did look that a number of young people kind of had the same, I guess, more stops in certain age groups with our black and Latinx. And so, so I see that you are pulling the age and looking at that. That can be a, that to me does strike me as concerning because of our university. And one of the things that I always heard as a past student at Western was, don't stay in Monmouth, go to Independence. And what you are going to be pulled over, that's just a given. I mean, and, and I, I didn't even grow up in this area. And I'm like, what are you telling me? So, so, you know, that's something to look at. And I know that you're saying that none of these numbers really jump out. But for me, the Latinx, the 220, the 17.2% does concern me only because Western is striving to be a Hispanic-serving institution. And if, I guess if our students who are coming to Western, who are Latinx, and hopefully we have more diversity at Western, this, this could be potentially concerning and it could skew the numbers. I mean, like you were saying, that this could be a, you know, depending on the year, depending on what happens. But that, as a city, I think we have to do as much as we can to support our university and becoming an HSI institution. And because that's going to bring money to help all students, not just Hispanic students. So I hope that our department is, is going to look at these numbers and kind of talk about what they're going to do, especially with Western becoming HSI, with the age of being pulled over is younger. Because I, I would like to know what our Monmouth Police Department does with this information. How do they evaluate it? What are their plans to move forward with that? So I hope that that comes to the council. And even if it's not public at the time, at least we had the opportunity to discuss it and then maybe help and brainstorm our police, with our police department about ways to move forward and, and to help with some of what's happening in the numbers. But, so I, I don't know if you could, it's kind of a combination of a comment and a question, but Ken, thank you for the information. Appreciate that.
Thank you very much, Counselor. And I think that the, the, the only, you know, maybe answer that I have is that what we have to do at the stop, and this is not passing the buck. I think it's, it's more trying to think about where these conversations should take place. What we do at the stop program is we look at Oregon's 107 What we do at the stop program is we look at Oregon's 170 odd law enforcement agencies and we have to set statewide metrics to, to identify disparities. But what is essential and what I'm so happy about what you all are doing here in Monmouth and the other cities that I have appeared in front of over my time at CJC is the threshold for what you will accept as, as, as acceptable policing data is up to you and your citizens. And so the primary thing that I want to do is to provide maybe some state level thresholds that we look at. But certainly as a council and as a city, that's why we make this data public. And I know that it's not always the most accessible information because, you know, it does get a little bit technical at times, but our goal is to put the information in your hands so that you all can determine what you would like to, to, to accept in your, in your city or town. And certainly too, you know, it's something that it's not too difficult for us to find out what is the under 29 or under 21 population by race in a given area. And then you can compare it to what we find on the dashboards. Because certainly we're presenting percentages here. And so given the college age population, we would expect those percentages to be higher. I, I have to admit, I'm not familiar enough with Monmouth to know off the top of my head if any of those are skewing in one direction or another. And, but, but that's exactly the, the additional levels of analysis that whether it's the city itself or, you know, within reason, CJC can, can also help with some of that. And I say within reason only because if we have 170 cities reach out, then we're going to be in real trouble real fast. But if we have a couple who are very interested in this, we're more than happy to help.
Thank you. And I think, as you mentioned, you know, looking at college towns may become a future evolved analysis. And yeah, for example, all universities in the United States, but certainly at Western have seen a huge decline in Middle Eastern students. So those numbers would change and have nothing to do with the policing. So and as Counselor Selena Solivero says, Western is trying to attract more Latinx students. So finding out the population of the university student body as well as the community might be an interesting extra factor to factor in because I know how you data nerds love extra factors. So Counselor McKeel, did you have a question or comment before Counselor Oberst? I thought I saw your hand up.
Yes, I did. Actually, as, as a data nerd, no. So thank you, actually, Dr. Sandra, Sandra Green. I actually have been practicing, practicing your name and I still didn't do it correctly and I apologize. So it's, um, this is, this is incredible data and thank you so much for this. I, I have a question about what would be possibly recorded as a stop. We've heard from young people, young people of color, black people in Monmouth about getting stopped by a police officer and then nothing happened. So one was a young college woman, black woman who was stopped by an officer. There were like, I don't know, three or four other young women in the car. And the driver said she was crying so hard when she was stopped by the police officer that he just said, that's okay, go ahead and leave. And, and I, and I'm not sure that that would be something that would be recorded. We also heard from a young Latino who said he was stopped by an officer who came up to the window and said, oh, I, I know you. Never mind, go ahead. So, so these are like questions, like, well, did that stop get reported then? And in both of those questions is embedded in an additional question. So those are my questions, like, would they be recorded? But looking at data then, and I like the post-stop outcomes kind of, and I don't use, mean to use this word disrespectfully, but it pretends that all outstop, all, all stops are equal. But if a 40-year-old white man gets stopped by a police officer, it's annoying and it's like, well, what? But if a 40-year-old black man gets stopped by a police officer, the reaction is not the same. And so I'm, I'm worried that the data doesn't, and it's not, you're not able to do this. So this isn't your fault. I'm not saying that. It's just that I'm worried that the data is something that we can normalize. Well, all stops are of equal value or your equal irritation to people who are stopped by police. So back to my initial first two questions, would those two stops been recorded? And thank you for my, your patience as I kind of just rambled on.
No problem, Commissioner. As you described those two instances, both of those stops should be recorded. Simply because nothing happened, that does not mean the stop would not be recorded. And simply because the police officer did not articulate to the stopped individual why they were stopped, that does not mean they should not be recorded. They should still be reporting to their agency and to us, what was the initial reason? So even if the young lady in your first example was, was crying and therefore they did not continue the stop, there still should have been a reason why. But then the disposition for that stop would be, one of the allowable dispositions is that nothing happened. You know, sometimes officers may approach the car and they have a conversation and for whatever reason, they, they let the individual go on. I think that briefly, looking just to the side here, it doesn't seem that it happens a lot in Monmouth, but certainly it says that around 2% of stops for Hispanic or Latinx drivers, around 3% for for Asian, you know, there, there are, there is a category for that. And so it's not a very common occurrence, but it does happen. The types of stops that we would not receive, as I mentioned, they're associated with a call for service. And so if, if, if an officer received a call on their radio that said that a car with a license plate of whatever the license plate number has been stolen and they happen to see that car drive by, that is a call for service that there's no discretion in that case. The officer should stop that car. If there's a be on the lookout order for somebody who fits a, a description of a robbery suspect, then that would not be recorded. But any of those other stops should be, and we work closely with the agencies and reach out with them to discuss their stop rates to try to ensure that what we're getting is that full, that, that, that full slate of stops. And, and as to the critiques around the predicted disposition, you hit the nail on the head with what are the, the, the data gaps that we have. There is no way that we will ever through our data be able to record all of the other contextual factors that happened in a stop. We actually don't know if a young woman is crying when she's pulled over or if the officer happens to know somebody. But our hope is that given that we're also working with inferential statistics where we're allowing for a little bit of error here and there, is that when we identify differences between predicted disposition rates, they're pretty robust in, in, in how, you know, and how large those gaps are. And plus, if, if, if stops are a lot less stressful for those of us who are white and are privileged enough to be, to, to, you know, to be a part of the dominant culture, that just means that our stop rates could in theory be depressed even farther down. And so we would, that, that, that if nothing else, it doesn't really make it any better. It makes actually harder for the officers in a sense, you know, because we're going to see, then the way that we usually display these are on, we have little histograms. And so then that gap would be larger and then that would risk even more so the finding of a disparity. What we really want to see is, are you treating those Latinx or those black drivers substantially the same as white drivers? Of course, there's always going to be some differences attributable to many different factors that we can never control for. So I try to be careful to not speak past our data, but you're exactly correct. There are going to be factors that we can never detect in the data. And that's where the qualitative data experts would, would best take over from those of us who just work in the, the big data world.
Counselor Oberst.
So just a couple of observations and a question or two. So I'm going to make the assumption that younger drivers tend to be not as good drivers. I'm also going to make an assumption that, and I don't know if this is true or not, and I think this circles back around Counselor Carey. But what's the proportion of African-American students on campus versus the African-American population in Monmouth, for example? When you look at our statistics, the African-American stop rate is a little above the population proportion. Is that because more African-Americans in town are students and younger and younger drivers and younger drivers aren't as good? So I don't know, but that's the kind of thing that I don't know that your data is ever going to be able to pull out unless you take the time to separate out Western from Monmouth as a whole and know what those proportions of, of people are, you know, to come up with a better idea. The one that really stood out with me, for me was that theoretically, we should have 50/50 stops, male and female. Again, you might make an argument that male drivers tend to be a little more aggressive and maybe that gets them stopped more. White male drivers aren't being stopped in a hugely higher proportion than white females drivers are Latinx and black male drivers are. And the Middle Eastern drivers, the males were off the charts, but there might be cultural reasons for that. So, you know, again, just an observation and something that I think our department would be wise to look at going forward. And then you made a comment around Latinx drivers or Latinx stops that 16.7% of Monmouth residents are Latinx, but 40% of independents. If we were out in the country by ourselves without independence right next door, that would give you cleaner data than having this significantly larger population in a directly abutting city, I presume. And is that, is that what you were getting at with that comment is that?
Yeah, just in general, and, and it's more my observation, not as somebody who spent a ton of time in Monmouth or Independence, but again, the proximity of the city, the, the shared, you know, there's, there's probably folks who, who, who go and have a drink at, at, or go to a restaurant or a bar, you know, in one city or others. So there's probably just a lot of, my assumption was there was a lot of trading back and forth. If that's an erroneous assumption, then you can certainly please, please.
I think it's very accurate. I mean, if nothing else, somebody in Independence who works in Monmouth or works in Corvallis may well come over through Monmouth on their way to work, you know, so you, you get that way through. But overall, when I see that we're at 16.7% Latinx, according to the census in our stop chart, 17.2, that actually strikes me as being, you know, amazingly half a percent difference is probably statistical noise at the end of the day. And I was encouraged to see that the, the population proportion and the stop proportion was so close. That was, that was going to be one of my areas of concern was that if I saw the Latinx stops higher, I just really didn't see that. So I think that's, you know, good work on our police department's part and, and I hope that we can continue to have good, clean data around all of this because this is a, a challenge for America in general, nationally in general. Some parts of the country are way worse at it than others. And you know, it's, it's nice to see that we seem to be at least close to on track here. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and one, one comment that I will make is that, you know, we, we've talked a lot about census and, and the benchmarks. The, the one thing that when, well, it, it's tough because I can't present it tonight because we've not conducted these analyses yet. But each of our analyses seeks to move beyond the census benchmarks. And so on some level, it, it actually doesn't matter once we run those models, whether you have independence next door, whether your city is located on the moon, whether you have a share of this or a share of that, or a university or not. The nice thing is that's where we're able to compare, again, with some of the cautions that Counselor McKeel pointed out, mostly like to like. And so that's where if, if younger folks are bad drivers, and I know I was not as good of a driver when I was a younger person, then at least we're comparing bad young drivers to bad young drivers. Again, it's just bad white young drivers to bad African-American young drivers. And so as long as we don't have differences in driving ability across racial or ethnic groups, then we can feel pretty good about making those comparisons. And I think we can also remember that most traffic studies demonstrate that 96% of us break one traffic rule or another every time we go out driving. And so the idea that, you know, there are major differences in, in overall driving behavior across racial groups, most police officers can find a reason to stop somebody if they want to. And that's not to suggest they do it in a nefarious way. It's just whether you go, you know, a couple of miles over the speed limit, you forget your turn signal at this point, you just don't even realize there's a rule of the road that you violated. I've learned way too much about the Oregon vehicle code over the past few years and it's amazing the types of things you could get stopped for.
And thanks for the reminder about the benchmark not being the end all and be all too. And, and that, you know, it's the digging down beyond that surface superficial benchmark that's going to be the, the thing that's so telling.
Right.
Okay, we have a couple more comments and, you know, I think it'll also be interesting when we can compare ourselves to something like Silverton. No matter what our census and they don't have a college, but we also have Highway 99 going through town and you don't have that in Silverton. So
Right.
you know, we're stopping all kinds of people who have nothing to do with our community. So those will be some other interesting comparisons. We'll take Chris and then I'll let Carol finish up and we will try to move on this evening. And, and let poor Ken and Angel get back to their evenings.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And, um, you know, I'll be brief you, you beat me to it there with the consideration about Highway 99. I have, I've done police ride-alongs here with our fine police force. And, you know, that, that Highway 99 is a big consideration when we're talking about traffic stops that has absolutely nothing to do with our, our population within the city. Although I am, I am, um, you know, very, very glad to hear about the level of statistical analysis that'll be done comparing like to like demographically. And I very much look forward to that data. I think, I think that's going to be really, really informative and fascinating to look at. Given that we do have this, and I'll call, I'll call independence as this, you know, lovely sister city right next door here. And you pointed out, I believe, we, we share a lot of resources. We share, you know, we share school district. We share a fire district. And, uh, you know, they, they are just right there. I can ride the bike from the center of, I can, I can and have ridden my bike from the center of Monmouth to the center of Independence. And I like going that way because it's downhill. Um, but, uh, you know, are, are there any, um, are there any statistical analyses that can be made between, between here and there? Even though the populations are different, a lot of times the, the, the drivers in each are really the same because we're all one community. Is there any avenue for, for that?
That's a great question and not one that I've thought about too deeply. You know, I've, I'm slated to present in, in front of some local public safety coordinating councils on some similar areas that feel that they're more of a, you know, a collection of small cities as opposed to, as opposed to independent ones. And so I think that one option could simply be looking at the data together and having some sort of joint meeting with, with your sister city. But it also, it, it would not be a big lift for us at CJC to run the data with Monmouth and Independence together. And we could put in some controls for that. But, but if, if you think of yourselves as somewhat, you know, sister cities in that sense, then that's something that we could do and we could make it so that it doesn't completely mix everything between the two law enforcement agencies. And we'd have to think about what it would really mean if we see a different pattern when you combine the cities versus have them separate. But certainly with, with, with cities like yours, I think there are some, some great opportunities and, but I would also rely on you all as city leaders and again, residents to help us to figure out what would be those things we'd want to keep in mind if, if we were going to embark on that type of analysis. Because, uh, you know, that, that would be new territory for us and we would, the last thing we'd want to do is make some assumptions that are incorrect and then make some, some, you know, give you some conclusions that are incorrect. And then one other just little thing that piqued my interest when you were mentioning 99. I'll have to check with your data, but we do give agencies an option and it's only an option because it wasn't originally in the House bill to report the home zip codes of drivers who are stopped. And so if, if the Monmouth Police Department, and I just honestly don't know how well, because it's, because it's optional, if, if they report that consistently, then that would be another avenue to look maybe perhaps at the student issues, but then certainly the commuter issues that you all have, have flagged for us.
Thank you. Thank you for that. And I'll, I'll, I'll make one, one, one last comment because there's been a lot of, a lot of talk about age and driving tendencies. Anyone who's ever been to Sarasota, Florida knows that it's, it's not necessarily just the young drivers that can be trouble out there. So, um, I'll leave you with that thought.
I resemble that remark, Counselor Lopez.
Yes.
I was going to say thank you, Counselor Lopez, because I, I can outdo any young person when it comes to running a stop sign. I, I do it so well. So actually, I actually have a little bit, this is a data nerd question. So I'm so glad that we can, that you're still here. So how well does this data hide any outliers? So we could have, for example, 12 police officers who are great. They, they do stops just the way you want. But you have one officer who is an outlier and that's where all the data shows up. But this data, I don't think would show that and I'm, I am happy to be corrected.
Well, unfortunately, I cannot correct you in that assumption. That is one area that policymakers made a decision when they passed 2355 that the identity of stopped individuals or officers was not to make it into our system. So there are certain, there are systems across the country in certain states to where you will have officer identifiers. They're, they're scrubbed. And so someone like me sitting in Salem would never know if it was Officer A versus Officer B. But, but we don't have that data. We could very easily, if we had data of that type, be able to separate out and to see if you have one officer who is driving most of the differences. But on the positive end, one thing I'll note is that we've worked with some, some other cities that are even larger than Monmouth. And I just mentioned larger because usually if it's larger, it's harder to discern patterns sometimes. But when we have a cooperative police agency who is willing to talk about what their shifts look like and which officers are working on certain days, then we actually can use our data and pretty, pretty closely approximate being able to look and see if you have one officer who is doing, you know, performing stops at a different rate or what have you. We've worked with another city that will remain nameless. And I have at least learned that when driving in that city, if I get pulled over by one of their two traffic officers, then I'm going to get a ticket. However, if I get pulled over by their other traffic officer, there's a pretty good chance that I won't. And so one officer vastly tickets more than the other. And that's now something that the agency, they can work out and see, you know, if that's a practice that they would like to continue or not. But certainly if, if there were concerns by the council and you wanted to speak with, with your chief, then it's, it's not too difficult for us to work with an agency to start to dive into those, those factors. It's not something that we try to initiate with all agencies. It's, it would be more on, on their initiation or your initiation as a council.
Wow, just thinking about this project, kind of overwhelming, right? I mean, doing, doing the large cities and now down to all the different permutations. It's very, very interesting project. And hopefully we'll continue to be able to fund this project and get the information that we need to make our community safe and safe for all of those who live here as well as travel through. So I'm going to thank again Ken and Angel for sharing that and for sharing that presentation with us. Reminder that that data is not, not everybody will get their city data yet. So that, that data is very preliminary. I'm sure Ken would make sure we note that we won't be sharing that widely at this point. We look forward to the official report after you don't get Thanksgiving and hopefully we all do. So thank you very much, both of you for joining us this evening. We really, really appreciate it.
Thank you very much for having me. And as I mentioned, I'll probably do it tomorrow morning. But I will follow up with Isaiah and Marty and send out those materials that you all have those at your fingertips and the dashboard. And so, like I said, please feel free to follow up with questions.
Great, thank you. And Angel did put the link in the chat to the actual website. So you can go in and dig around like I did last summer and kind of see what is being reported and how that looks for the larger cities. So thanks again. At this point, then I would entertain a motion to, well, I don't have to. I'm going to declare that we're going into executive session at this point. We will meet in executive session for the purpose of performance evaluation of public officers and employees held pursuant to ORS 192662I, which allows us to meet in executive session. Representatives of the news media and our, our herb, I think his name was left. And he's left the room, but, and I don't see any other news media on. No decision may be made in executive session. At the end of executive session, we will return to open session and welcome the audience back into the call. But it is not anticipated that action will be taken this evening after returning from executive session. So at this point, we will keep Lane Shutterly with us. We will stop the streaming for this evening and give a second to let our non-essential personnel, Zach, leave.
Madam Mayor, I request a one minute, 30 second break. I'll be right back.
I will, I will give you all a three-minute break while we unhook here. So we'll see you back at 8:50. Thank you. And Phil, is we going to stop the recording?